Well, I've got six o'clock, so Sandy, would you like to give us a quick?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Jim. Welcome, everybody. I realized this was kind of short notice, which is why we're recording it, but I wanted to welcome you all and thank Mike. Mike actually came and did a similar presentation for the Herkimer BOSI's cabinet, the group of superintendents, last Friday. And this federal aid has so many quirks and so many different deadlines for both spending the money. And so we asked if he could put something together for school boards that because the timeline is very tight on this whole thing. So, so that's what you're going to see tonight. And then I turned right around and asked Jim, so remember, this was Friday of last week, and said, is there any way we could pull this off? I copied Mike in, and of course, Jim and Charlie made it happen. So here we are with it being recorded. And Mike, will you be sharing the PDF of the presentation afterwards also?
Yes.
Okay, so what we can do is we can
out too.
Yeah, send out the PDF and the recording, just to make sure that people can be as well informed as possible. And I plan on sending it out to my superintendents. I'll also make sure I send it to District Superintendent Bootleman and District Superintendent Kilburn, to make sure that they can send it out to their superintendents to share with boards. Because this is a lot of money, but you got to be really thoughtful about how you use it. So I'm going to apologize, though, I'm not going to be staying for too much longer. I've been out every night this week. So I'm not, I'm gonna, and I've already seen Mike's wonderful presentation. But Jim, you can text me if you need me, and I'll, and I'll hop back in, okay?
Good, Sandra. Thanks so much, Sandy. Appreciate the help.
No, thank you and Charlie for pulling this together. And, and Mike, take it away, because you've got a lot to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike. Thank, thank you.
Let me just get this going here. So Jimmy, you have it on there for the Kiel and A at the end. But you know, this is a pretty small group here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Certainly.
Mike, and typically, that's what we work on, you know, something we're pretty fluid, Mike. So yes, all right?
Yep. And so I was just gonna say, you know, as we go, if you have questions, you know, certainly feel free to ask. Yeah. Because sometimes, you know, we, it does get a little complicated here. And sometimes when it's, when it's on your mind is the time to ask it. But certainly, you know, we'll take questions at the end, too. So
Yeah, we got, Mike, yeah, and typically, that's our style. We're very fluid. Okay?
Okay, great. Okay. And so I guess just, just starting out here, if you're not familiar with our service, the State Planning Service, I would just give you a quick recap, kind of a what we do. But we're a BOSI service, out of Questar three BOSIs, and we're statewide service. So we serve over 650 school districts statewide. So basically, just about everybody. So all of your districts are most likely a part of our service. And we also serve a majority of the BOSIs as well. So we basically, as our name would, would imply state aid is predominantly what we do. But really, anything business or financial for schools, that's really our expertise. I was a business official, a number of my colleagues were business officials, worked in schools. We've got colleagues that were have worked at the State Education Department. So really, we're a resource for schools and typically, on a day in and day out basis, we're usually interacting with the school business officials, but also superintendents, and then some occasions, school boards as well. So that's kind of what we do. And that's our kind of expertise. And so, so what I want to do, you know, really kind of go through the different federal aid packages here. And really, you know, we're kind of in really bizarre times. If you, if day to day hasn't told that to you enough. But as far as school finance goes, I mean, really, six or eight months ago, we were really looking at mid-year cuts. And, you know, lo and behold, we had two federal stimulus packages and $4 trillion. And that's, you know, now we're really, you know, sitting, I guess you could say, kind of sitting pretty right now. And so really, you know, kind of talk about this federal piece, you know, because it's, it really is bizarre. There's this huge influx of money. But now there's this really short turnaround to be able to submit applications and be able to get the money. So we'll just talk about kind of all the different pieces of that as we go here. And so really, kind of my starting point, before we even get into the federally, you know, I want to talk about just, just aid for schools in general, because I think one of the things that's important here with the federal money is it needs to be taken into context with, with the other pieces of school finance. And really, when we talk about, you know, the revenue sources, for, for most districts, you know, the state aid part is a pretty big part of it. And I really kind of, you know, illustrating that point of what I was, was saying with all that federal money, if we go back to the governor's budget back in January, things were very different from what he was proposing from what we ultimately saw in the enacted budget. And so this really is just showing it, it's in the structure of the state aid runs that may look familiar. But these are the state, the state total numbers. And really, if we go back to the, to the governor's budget, he was really, you know, he was saying a bottom line number of $31 billion in aid for school. But it was really deceptive. He was, he was really supplanting the federal money. He was supplanting state aid with the federal money. So it was kind of a, you know, a little bit of a gimmick here. And so really, you know, his bottom line number really wasn't that. The state support was really only 25 billion. And so he was basically taking aid cuts, and then kind of backfilling it with the federal money. And then, so really, the big difference, well, what we saw was that the, the enacted budget, there were no aid cuts. And really, just that state support in itself, the 29 billion, huge difference from what the governor had proposed. And really, you know, the big difference was foundation aid, $1.4 billion statewide. And I kind of started out making this, this, kind of making this point, because, you know, it varied from district to district. So depending on your district circumstances, you know, some districts saw a pretty substantial increase, and some saw more modest increases, but everybody saw something. And really, you know, I talked about the foundation aid piece, because really, that kind of aid is really, in kind of what was promised in this budget is really something that you could really sustain programs with over time. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a commitment by the state, you know, to continue to fund, where the federal money, this is really one shot revenue, you know. And I think that's really kind of the big difference. But we can see in that enacted budget, not only were there no cuts, that basically, the governor was supplanting, but now, all of the federal money, the two, the two, the aid package from, from both December and from March, that all came as supplemental. So in addition to, so there was an increase in state aid, and then in addition to all this federal money. So, so a much different circumstance than what we would have expected back even in January. And so, so that, you know, hopefully, you know, really kind of the big things out of that, you know, that not only did New York State kind of promise, you know, increases in aid for, for next year, but really, there was a commitment for districts, particularly if their, their foundation aid is below the calculated amount, to get them to that calculated amount over three years. So really, a promise of substantially more money for many districts, and really kind of that, you know, with that idea that that would continue in out years. And so really, you know, as I said, that foundation aid was the big thing. And then, then really, there were no aid cuts. But really, as far as the federal piece goes, all of that money, those, those two stimulus packages, December and March one, you know, that's all supplemental to that state aid. So, so now, you know, kind of that's kind of the context kind of setting us up here. And now we'll take a look at the federal money. And really, you know, there's three different aid packages. So the CARES Act, this is what came out last year. And really, this money, school districts didn't really look at this as additional money. This, this, this just filled the gap. New York State cut state aid, and they, and so I use these, these are our big vocab words today, supplant and supplement, right? And we'll use them on a district context, but we'll use them on a state context as well. And so, so really, you know, that, that idea of supplanting something that you're using it instead of something else, as opposed to supplementing where it's really additional. And so for that CARES Act, you know, that, that really was supplanting state aid. I mean, the governor, you know, in, in the legislature last year, they put it right in the budget, you know, you didn't, it wasn't additional money. And so that money strictly came from Title I counts. And so, you know, what is a Title I count? Well, it's a federal measure of poverty. So sometimes we talk about free and reduced price lunch. That's a New York State metric. The federal government, this is census poverty. So basically, any, any children in your district that are school age, they don't have to attend your schools, they could be homeschooled, they could go to a private school. But if they are within your district boundaries, and they fit their, the definition of federal census poverty, they would be counted in here. And so we see that, you know, so that does differ. It's a lower number than we would see like free and reduced price lunch, the reduced portion, a lot of those kids don't fit the metric of census poverty. So, so that number sometimes is bigger than this number. But this is, this is where the federal money comes. It's a federal count. That's where the money comes from. And so this money was really set for this year. But with federal grants, there's a thing called the tidings amendment, where you can actually spend the money, an additional calendar year through the, through the deadline. So even if you haven't spent all this money this year, I know there were a lot of districts that got approved only fairly recently. The state was very slow at processing these applications. If you didn't spend it all this year, you do have an opportunity to spend it through next year. So that, that is a potential option. So that was the first one. And if we look at the total dollar figures, you know, that was 1.1 billion for New York State schools. So now, the second package, this is the one that passed in December, and we can see significantly bigger, 3.8 billion, right? And so this one, again, use those Title I counts, except it used a 2020 Title I count. But in addition to that, New York State had a discretionary amount of money that they, they were allotted 10% of the total, that they basically could dole out to schools as they saw fit. And so one of the things that we saw, a lot of districts were comparing themselves with the CRSA, and they were like, you know, it's crazy, it wasn't proportional, you know, you think it would be, you know, three times as much as, as the CARES Act, some districts saw significantly more money. And it was really the, the state really basically, that extra 10%, they made their own formulas to distribute it. And it was really kind of more like what we see in the typical budget process, where, you know, some kind of backroom negotiation, they, and, you know, and that came out of the governor's budget, and they stuck with it. So that, you know, so we'll look at that, too. But that may be if you're, if you're seeing your districts is a lot more than another district, or a lot less, it's really probably because of that discretionary piece, more than the Title I counts. And again, and again, because of that tidings amendment, you can actually spend that money through September 30th of 23. So there is some time to spend that money. And then the last one that came out just this March, and look at, look at the dollar figures. So we go from 1.1 to 3.8 to 8.2 billion. We, you know, we kind of shaking our heads a little bit when this stuff comes out, because, you know, on a federal level, you know, we're talking about trillions, it's just kind of staggering the amount of money. So, so really, you know, with that, that ARP, or the American Rescue Plan, it again, uses that, those Title I counts. But again, just like the CRSA, 10% of it was given in New York, really to have discretionary, how they sought it to distribute it. And so we'll look at that going on here. That money can be spent through September 30th of 24. So, so what I wanted to look at here, so this is how SCD put out the allocations to districts. And you can see on here, if we look at the first one here, Albany City School District, their CRSA money was only, this 90% one is the one that's based on Title I counts. And so what we saw with Albany, and we saw with a lot of high need districts, is they didn't get any of the discretionary money. They only got the Title I portion. And so you can see that there's nothing here under those discretionary allowances. Whereas if you look at Burnox Westerlow, they have, based on their Title I counts, and then based on that, basically, that, that 10% that New York State had, they had a portion that was discretionary. So it, so it just shows you, you know, a lot of times, people try to make sense of this and say, well, why didn't they get to the discretionary piece? And somebody, you know, the high need district didn't. I don't know the answer. It was a politically agreed upon formula. But it does, you know, there are significant differences. And it's interesting, and it may speak to that, that political piece. But I, you know, one of the things, if you, if you go back to January, when, when this, when the state originally allocated this money, the governor was looking to supplant state aid with this money. So part of that deal had to do with that fact that he was filling that gap. And I thought, interestingly enough, there were a number of Westchester schools. And if you look at our leadership of our state government, in both legislative houses, there's a leadership in Westchester, a number of those districts got a pretty significant portion of that discretionary amount. So read into it what you, what you may, but I think there certainly was a political influence to that. So with the CRSA, so this is that second funding, really pretty open for what you can spend it on. There's not, and, and one of the things, you know, so again, these are vocab words here, supplement and supplant. Typically, when we think of a grant, you typically have to, to be providing something, something supplemental. So if we think of like a Title I grant, or we think of an IDA grant, you have to be doing something in addition to what you're already doing. For this funding, there, you don't have to supplement. You can supplant. And in fact, you may want to do that. There may be, you know, some, some good strategies as far as fiscal management, where you'd actually want to supplant some costs. And really, basically, what, what you would do, you know, we've just, just passed our 2021 budgets, right? And essentially, you can take some of the costs that are in your 2021 budget, put them in the grant. And essentially, what you're doing is you're creating a surplus next year. So at year end, you can have that surplus. And then, you know, if you wanted to, you know, you could use that for one time purchases, or you could put that into reserves, you know, or if you, if you know, you have capital work. So it, you know, potentially, maybe a strategy you may want to look at in your district. And then, the other thing here, too, was with the CARES Act, there was a really, you had to divide a portion of that money for the non public schools within your boundaries, or not just within your boundaries that any of your students attended. And that was a real problem for many districts, getting a response and that kind of thing. And it really made the whole process very complicated. Now, the private schools all have their own, their own funding. So, so the public schools don't have to deal with that at all in this, in this, for both the CRSA and the American Rescue Plan. Okay, so now getting into the American Rescue Plan, New York State added a number of additional rules to this money. So the federal government, they put it out, they had their own rules. In New York State, you know, it's kind of like what we like to do in New York State, we like to add additional, additional regulations and steps. Unfortunately, it seems all too often the case. And I'm not really sure of the motivation. But they, but, but in the enacted budget, they did add language that says, with the American Rescue Plan money, districts have to spend a minimum of 12 and a half percent each year for the next four years. So 12 and a half percent in 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24, and 24, 25. And keep in mind, that 24, 25 year, it's only through September of 24. So it's kind of a weird requirement. And I think the New York State Education Department thinks that, basically, the legislature went over the line, that they don't really have authority to, to implement this. And that may be the case, it may go away. But right now, this is law. So right now, we have to abide by, you know, this is what's, what's in statute. So we have to abide by it. If it does go away, it does. But, you know, it's, it's a restriction on this money. And then, you know, so really, that, that 12 and a half percent equates to 50% over the four years. The other 50% can be spent at any time. So you could spend it all in 21, 22, or you could spread it out over the four years. And so really, that applies only if a district gets less than $500 per student. And we'll look at that, that calculation kind of going, going forward here. But pretty much, the districts that that are below the 500 are really some pretty affluent districts, mostly downstate Long Island, out your way. Yeah, you're, you're all going to be subject to this. And really, it's that 12 and a half for spending, minimum spending per year. And so really, you know, this is, this is, this is the backup. If you, if you want to get into it, you can see how, how they came about this, this piece here. This is all public data. It's all on the New York State Education Department's state aid page. They have every district's information on there. If you, if you ever get bored, or if you find this interesting, like I do, you might actually seek it out. But, but it is all there, and it does show you the per pupil amount for your district. And with the caveat that when they, when they did the data, they, they screwed up the decimal. So it says 67,000. It's really $672 per pupil. So this district is over the 500, they are subject to it. So just keep in mind, always, always a little catch to things here. You know, we can see in this district. So, so this is the calculation. And, you know, we always like to say, the crazier the formula, the more you realize that they actually backed into the formula, that they knew the answer they wanted to get. So they created a formula to get there. And if you look at this one, it starts out with the number 4,550.26, right? So that's just, just a, you know, they backed into that number. And so it's that times a regional cost index, basically, just a cost index, depending on where you are geographically in the state, and it's times an extraordinary needs index, which would be just a level of poverty. And then there's a wealth factor that gives you the per pupil amount. So in this case, this district wouldn't be subject to the 12 and a half percent, because they're below $500 a pupil. But then we can see here, here's the math. So for this district, there are 5,939 students in their enrollment, times the $460, that gets the, gets them to the 27, 34. That's how the allocation came about. And so, so what I want to do, so actually, can you talking about the American Rescue Plan here? And really, that, so, so, you know, we made the distinction here between the federal rules and the state rules. And when the federal government put the money out, they said that 20% of the money has to be spent on learning loss remediation. So this is the portion that's just from the Title I counts. So this is federal required. And then the rest can be used, the other 80% of that can be used on, and basically, anything. It's, it's pretty, pretty wide ranging, what you can use it for. But now, New York State has put in some addition, additional restrictions, in addition to that federal requirement. And New York State is calling this, basically, this is the discretionary money that New York State had, they're, they're calling it a learning loss grant. And so if your district got this, this discretionary money, you're subject to this additional restriction as well. And in, if you have a learning loss grant, 14.286% of that money needs to be spent on summer enrichment programs. 14.286% needs to be spent on after school programs. And then the remainder really can be, for anything really, that, you know, and this is, this is pretty wide ranging, but really, it's anything, you know, the, the concept of learning loss, you know, the, the kids haven't been in a school as much, although I know many of you are, have been, you know, full time all year. But really, I think the idea was certainly last year, that, you know, it's trying to catch kids up to where they, they would be had we not had a pandemic, and, and kind of disrupted education as much as it did. So those are the two different restrictions there. And what I wanted to do is, you know, these are the allocations. And I want to kind of, New York State Education Department put this out, and, and I, I thought it was a little confusing, the way this is set up. And so I wanted to kind of break down what the different pieces mean.
Mike?
Yep.
Before we break it down, Brian, Dr. Blair's got a quick question. Dr. Blair? A second here, real quick, I'm asked to unmute. Dr. Blair? I believe this question, Mike, is some after school. Does after school include summer, or strictly during the school year?
Okay, sorry, I think I finally figured out how to unmute. My apologies.
Okay, Brad, go ahead.
So yes, so yes, that was it. When, when we talk about the after school, you know, I know there was also mention of summer programming, but, you know, within that definition of after school, can that be inclusive of summer school?
So these are two separate requirements. And it's only if your district actually is getting that learning loss grant, are you subject to this. And this is a minimum, that 14.286% is specifically spent on summer, and then 14.286% specifically spent on after school. The remainder of those, that learning loss grant, it could be spent on after school, could be spent on summer. But those are, those are the minimums, if you get that learning loss grant, that need to be spent on those, those areas.
Right. But what I'm, what I'm asking, too, is with regard to the two set asides for summer and after school, can the after school, if we did something, let's say we ran a summer school program, and we had something that would be after the summer school program, could that be considered after school? Or does that only apply to the 10 month school year?
Yeah, I mean, I believe it would be only in the 10 month school year. I don't believe that the full guidance has come out yet on the American Rescue Plan. But I think that, that is the, the idea is that it would be after school in the 10 month, the 10 month regular school year.
Okay, and that's what I thought, too. But I just thought, if it was something where we offered a more extended program in the summer for maybe some of our higher risk kids, would that be considered after school? But, you know, I was just trying to be creative with some options.
Yeah. And I think that's the, the thing here, you know, SCD did a webinar a couple weeks ago. And I think, you know, I think one of the concerns is, especially for, for some smaller districts that are getting a really substantial amount of learning loss, you know, it's like, oh, wow, it's great, you have all this money. But then now you're subject to these restrictions. How do you, how do you spend it all? But I, but I think, you know, a lot of it really is going to come down to being a little bit creative with your application. You know, that, you know, I think there are some needs where, you know, potentially, maybe you need some, some computers or Chromebooks, that kind of a thing, where you would need them for one of these programs. But then you also might be able to use them, you know, after the fact. So I think it's, you know, I think a little bit of it is being creative, and trying to find, you know, ways that, you know, certainly, I think trying to, you know, if you're trying to reach kids, you know, in an after school, if they don't have the technology available, or that kind of thing, I think you can make a case. So I think it's, you know, it's tough, because there are restrictions. But I think, need to be trying to think of how to, to, you know, and it certainly seemed like SCD was kind of supportive of, you know, as long as you can explain it, you know, that it's allowable.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
Mike?
Yep. Okay, so, so looking at the allocations here, and I thought it was confusing when this came out. So what I, what I tried to do was kind of break it out a little bit here. And so really, this is the 90% here. This is the part for the American Rescue Plan. This is the part that came from the Title I counts, right? And then these other parts, I thought were confusing, because it's saying 1%. And then these other parts I thought were confusing because it's saying one percent, one percent, five percent. But if your district is getting money over here, this is a learning loss grant. And so what I was just talking about, that that it's discretionary state money, or or it's federal money, but New York State is as basically with their in their own discretion distributed to districts. And this would be subject to those things that I was just talking about on the prior page. So of this one point one million that is a look that was considered a learning loss grant, a hundred and sixty thousand of it needs to be spent on summer, and that's a minimum. And then a hundred and sixty thousand needs to be spent on after school. The remainder, that eight hundred and four thousand, it could be spent on summer, it could be spent on after school, or it could be spent on other things for learning loss. But, you know, the that's really what this chart is trying to tell you. In addition, the federal requirement says that you have to reserve twenty percent of this number for learning loss. So of the entire amount of money, and we can see some block in here of the five point nine million that this is districts getting in total. The, shoot, trying to move my, I got the face aside here, I was trying to move it. The, so of that five point nine million, one point one of it is restricted under the state's restriction. And then an additional nine hundred and sixty nine thousand is restricted for learning loss under the federal requirement. So, you know, there there certainly are more, there's more things going on with the American Rescue Plan than the the CR RSA. And for that reason, even though you have an additional year to spend this money, some districts are actually looking to spend this money and kind of holding off on the CR RSA money because they they have to, you know, just just thinking of how trying to meet all these different restrictions in the American Rescue Plan. So that that may be an option in in your districts. And and really, you know, so so going back to that idea of supplement or supplant, you know, well, what can we use the money for? So so we talked about that learning loss piece. And and really those things that are, those are like the real restrictions where you need to be spending it, you know, for those requirements. But but, you know, as I was saying, you you know, I think if you're creative, even though there are restrictions, you can find ways to kind of, you know, both meet students' needs and and meet, you know, the needs for the district as a whole. But really, for for anything, any of the portion of the American Rescue Plan money that's not subject to to learning loss and all of the CR RSA money, these are the basic bullet points of what you can use it for. And really, I I highlight that last one because this is really open ended. It says, other activities that are necessary to maintain operation of continuity of services, including continuing to employ existing or hiring new LEA and school staff. So essentially, you can put, you can supplant, you can put your existing staff in. It doesn't have to be additional spending. So so that's something, and and again, that may be something you want to consider doing kind of as a as a as a financial strategy for your district. And I think really one of the difficulties here is we've got all this federal money, but it really is one shot revenue. You're going to get the money, but then after that, you know, it's not going to continue. So thinking of how best to utilize that money, and and particularly on a short notice here, you know, I I think that's one of the things that, you know, the the applications are due, that CR RSA is due June fifteenth. But you do have an ability to amend the grant. So you can you can submit something. You have an ability to change what you originally put in there. So I think it's it's one of those things that it's it's a short turnaround. But you do have some flexibility if if things change, or you say, hey, you know what, maybe we want to go in a different direction. You know, you you do have that ability. And so there's a lot on the screen here, but I but, you know, one of the things with all this this money is that there are requirements to post plans. And so the the federal requirement says that you have a must post a plan to to return to in person instruction. You know, and I think this probably applies more to some other states than New York State. But I guess, you know, depending on where you are, but, you know, I know a lot of, you know, really a lot of the state is back full time. So this is really kind of a moot point, but you do have to po- post about returning in person instruction. And you do have to have public comment on the plan. So in addition, the the next one here is it's not federally, but it was included in the enacted budget. If you're one of the districts that got a substantial amount of foundation aid this year, if you're getting ten percent or ten million dollar increase, you you have to post a plan of what you're going to do with that money over the next three years. And you have to post it by July one, and you have to be able to seek public comment. So I know one of the things that, you know, from talking to districts, you know, the the public comment piece, you know, it 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 says it there, and then it also says it for the American Rescue Plan. There's not a whole lot of detail of what that public comment looks like. You know, it could be a board meeting, could be a, you know, a separate hearing. But I know New York State itself has some require with the federal money, they have to open up things to public comment. The State Education Department, they're using a survey tool, basically an online survey tool to fulfill that requirement. So it looks like that that, you know, that may be an option as well, you know, to put out some sort of a survey to your community. And and I think the thing is, you know, you know, because if if you're subject to the foundation aid one in addition to the the federal ones, you know, I think that, you know, in general, the 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 public doesn't necessarily care where the money's coming from. But I think it wa- it is, if you did something like a survey, that kind of a thing, you could really encompass all these different pieces. Because I think really it's it's more really trying to get an idea of where people's priorities are and what what they would want to see the money being utilized for. That's just a thought, you know, so they don't have to. But I know just with the quick turnaround, you know, people are just stressed out saying, well, how are we going to be able to do all this? And so I think they're, because the law is really kind of minimal, you 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 can you, you know, potentially use like a survey tool or something like that. And so the other part, I said, the the American Rescue Plan, you you additionally have to post that as well, how you'd be expending that money. And and one of the pieces in here is they they, you know, the idea of the the fiscal cliff that, you know, you you you're getting this one shot federal money if you're starting programs. You're supposed to show how you're going to maintain those programs after the the federal money runs out. So that that's all part of it too. If you choose to go that route, that's if that's kind of what you're us- utilizing the money for. You know, with the learning loss piece, I I don't think, you know, the expectation isn't that that's going to necessarily be an ongoing thing. I think that's really kind of more, more kind of remedial to to get kids up to speed kind of in the near term. But I think, you know, talking to some districts, you know, they they were really looking to do some some programs. And, you know, I think that's that's, you know, kind of the little point of caution that, you know, if you're really hiring teachers and doing more, you know, offering new programs, you know, you really do need to figure out how you're going to do that, how you're going to continue those programs, if that's the goal, you know, when the federal money runs out. So it's certainly just something to be thinking about kind of as we go forward. And and so really kind of the last thing I have on here, kind of more just in general, just just things to think about kind of strategy, you know, as far as what you might want to do, you know, with the money. But also kind of more in the context of the bigger financial picture for your districts. You know, I I talked about that idea of, you know, utilizing the grants, essentially supplanting some of your your regular general fund costs and putting them in the gram. And, you know, certainly you can do that. And I know some people are looking to put expenses from this year into the grant. But, you know, we're we're getting to the end of the year here, and if you do that, you're going to have more fund balance, which is a good thing in general, but but we're still subject to the four percent unrestricted fund balance rule. There was some talk in the in the budget process to to up that to six percent or eight percent. That didn't happen. So districts, you know, are still subject to the four percent fund balance limit. You know, but, you know, i- if if that's kind of the path you're going, or you're you're intentionally creating a surplus, you know, you may be looking to fill some reserves or or perhaps create a new reserve. I know some districts that have that I've talked to that have capital work are looking to to start a capital reserve or fill a capital reserve with the idea that they're using really this one shot revenue in the place of maybe some borrowing or borrowing at all. You know, so that that's kind of the benefit to the the taxpayers and the benefit to kind of get the work that you need done. So so that's certainly, you know, a possibility.
So can I just ask a question on that with the capital reserve? So this money, I know can be used for capital work, in which case I suspect that you wouldn't need voter authorization since you're not having any impact to the tax levy. Is that accurate? And then second, if we have the money and we want to use, you know, the federal money, that is, to either start or put more into a capital reserve, is that an allowable use?
Yeah, so so it's a good good question. We we've gotten those questions quite a bit. So there is language in the federal, in the federal legislation. Particularly, they they speak to HVAC work, and I and I think the idea was like ventilation.
Filters.
Yeah, the the problem is, you know, New York State's process for capital work is so cumbersome and so time consuming that, you know, kind of talking about in the office, even though you potentially can do that, I'm not so sure it's going to work out timing wise. And and I and I think it's, you know, it it's, I think it's making the process more difficult. But here's the other thing, and if you spend federal money on capital work, you're not going to get any building aid for it. So that idea that I was saying where essentially you're creating a surplus and then either putting in a capital reserve or just 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 paying cash rate for a project, that's a way to kind of leverage that money where you can also get get state aid on it, building aid.
All right, so use that money for the general fund type expenditures and then use the general fund money to fund the project or a capital reserve, in which case then you could generate aid on that money.
That that's right. And I think it's going to work out more just with the regular SCD process of approval and everything. I, you know, I mean, I I guess it depends ultimately where you are with it with a capital project. But but certainly, if if you can utilize a reserve, you don't have to do the work right this minute, you know, you you can do it a year or two out. You know, so if it fits, you know, that may fit in better with your overall plan. But I think it's going to be a lot cleaner to do it that way. Plus, you're leveraging that money to get the building aid as well.
All right, thank you for that.
Sure. Question here, if you use that money and pay cash for a project, how will that affect your calculation for your tax cap? We did that a few years ago with a building with a roof project and it pushed our our thing negative. Is that going to be a problem if we use some of this money to pay cash to do a project?
No, so so, you know, it's certainly a consideration. I think you you have to think what that looks like for your, you know, with your with your debt service and, you know, principal and interest that you have in years going out. Typically, if if you're paying cash for a project in one year, it it's going to benefit you that year. I think it it sounds like maybe in your case, the year after is where it hurt you. So but that that certainly would be a consideration as well. Yeah, I mean, so, you know, it is, you know, it is how it fits into the 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 overall. You know, I I guess that's the the thing that's difficult here is, you know, it's like they want to, they have this quick turnaround, oh, yeah, here, get it done. You know, you've got all this money and and, you know, we kind of saw as the whole process was going out, you know, we were just kind of thinking, man, this is, it's crazy. There's so much money. And rather than people being able to have some time to really think about it and really kind of, you know, come up with a real sensible plan, it's like this rush, rush, rush to get it done. You know, i- i- and absolutely, you have to be thinking about all those things. Tax cap certainly would be, you know, something, you know, you you wouldn't want to negatively impact that. So that's certainly a consideration. I absolutely. So the next thing I really, you know, even though, you know, we really talked, we talked about those restrict restrictions with learning laws. You know, other than that, you really have a a lot of latitude with what you can do with the money. But even though there aren't formal restrictions, in practicality, there there really are some. And and I I mentioned that paying, you know, for for capital work out of a grant where you you wouldn't get building aid, the same will hold true for like both these expenses. So if you supplanted both these expenses, okay, you know, all well and good, but now you're not going to get aided on those if you pay federal money for those. So you can't do that. Or you wouldn't, you probably wouldn't want to do that. And then special ed costs, you know, with with the IDA grant, you're subject to a maintenance of effort on local spending. And so so the idea is that you you're always required to contribute at least the same amount or more. If you supplant the federal money there, you won't be meeting that that threshold. You'll lose some of your your IDA grant. So there's more to this, you know, it really can get pretty complicated, you know, all the different things that can be affected that you may not even be thinking about, or you may be inadvertently affected, that those only to be taken into consideration as well. We talked about that idea of reserves and, you know, I I think, you know, with that, the overall state picture, you know, it looked, you know, as I said, really good, you know, as far as the the state's commitment to state aid this year. You know, and and they made a commitment to to getting everybody up to the calculated foundation aid over the next three years, which which sounds great, but we've kind of seen that happen before. And and I and I would kind of say, you know, it it's important to know, you know, sometimes we paint with a a wide brush and, oh, everybody's, you know, you know, made out great. Well, a lot of districts, and I'm sure a lot of districts in your area, got very, you know, got the minimum increase in 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 foundation. And that's largely reflective of of declining enrollments. You know, more rural areas, and really, the bulk of New York State's been seeing declining enrollment. But, you know, if if you got the two percent or three percent increase, well, that's probably, you know, at most what you're looking for in future years. You know, obviously, I can't see the read the future, but, you know, that's why this, the, you know, creating reserves or that kind of thing may be beneficial if we're going to get minimal increases, you know, kind of in in years going out. And certainly, if we think, you know, if the state's priority is really to fund the districts that are far behind, I don't know if, I think, you know, I don't know if Utica's on this call, but I mean, the the dollar figures that they're getting, I mean, it's it's substantial money. And that's a small, you know, that's a small city.
They did, Mike.
And and, you know, I I, you know, if you look at like a Rochester, I mean, they get like two hundred and twenty eight million. I I mean, it's staggering. So I I think that's, you know, the piece here is that, you know, certainly can be beneficial to some high need districts and certainly people that have been far behind. But what does that mean for everybody else? You know, the money's, you know. So it's I I think that's just, you know, it's all, you know, a lot of these things are dependent on what's going on in your district in particular. You know, for for how this kind of all, you know, where you need to be kind of in the in in the future. One shot expenditures, you know, tech, those kind of things. I know certainly, you know, that's good use of federal money. And then kind of really that, you know, I just kind of that overall theme that I I was just kind of saying there. You know, those those first four are things that are really within your district's control. You know, I think the last one really, you know, we we did see some pretty substantial money, you know, coming from New York State. You know, can they sustain this level of funding over, you know, over the next few years or into the future? And I I think that that one remains to be seen. Certainly, we don't have control over that, but I think, I know certainly in the back of my head, you know, I kind of think of those things sometimes. And, you know, we've we've seen this big commitment to to foundation aid. And but the state's done it before. They said, oh, we're going to pay all this out, and then they figure out they don't have enough money to do it. So I I think that, you know, just just kind of, you know, we looked at the federal stuff independently, but but in my mind, I think it has to fit into the whole picture. You know, a- all these different things in there are things that you need to be thinking about.
And hey, Mike, a couple of questions. You said the CR RSA, the plan is due June fifteenth, but you can amend it, correct?
Yeah, and and you can actually get a, you can get an extension on on the actually, you know, so it's not a, it's not a hard deadline. The SCD has put that deadline out. But if you if you just email them, they can extend it, which I know a lot of districts have already been granted.
Now, ARP, is there a plan for the ARP grant or no, Mike?
It's it's not out yet. Actually, I know something came out, but I don't think the actual application came out today.
Okay.
But for the Um, but for the CR RSA, the, the real drop dead deadline is January, uh, fifth of twenty-two.
Okay.
Um, if you don't spend the money there, the federal government can actually take it back. So that, that's the, that's the real deadline.
Yeah. And, and Mike, uh, when you talk about the foundation aid, et cetera, and you know, you said most of our upstate districts have lost, uh, student population. But again, uh, the data for the foundation aid was made back in what, mid nineties, I think. Uh, is there any talk about updating the, 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 uh, figures for that?
Well, I mean, so, so some of the data points are, are, you know, are dated. The, the, the one actually, you know, and then we talked about that idea of census poverty with the Title One counts.
Right.
That uses a two, uh, uh, two thousand. Um, yeah, they, they even adjusted that one. Um, but that, but, but really, I mean, the, the, with the formula. I mean, the big, the big thing with foundation aid, it's a weighted pupil count is what, what's driving it. So largely if you're declining in enrollment, you know, that, that number's going to calculate lower, you know, over time.
Right.
A- a- and that's, you know, that's really the big thing that we're seeing. Um, you know, a, a few pockets of, of, of areas in the state where there's a growth in enrollment. But largely we've, you know, most people are seeing a decline.
Um, but, but I guess, Mike, you know, I mean, what our schools are doing today is a heck of a lot different than what they were doing in two thousand, you know, so I mean, all of those added chores. You know, the, uh, the social emotional learning, the, uh, you know, the nutrition piece, the, you know, I mean, you go on and on and on, it's a lot different, it's the, the platform is much different now than it was in, you know, two thousand. So if there's any way that could be calculated into it, that would help the districts that have that weighted, uh, student loss over the years.
Yeah, I mean, you know, certainly, you know, I, I don't think that we're really, there's, there's talk of funding the formula. How, you know, how it's always been calculated. There hasn't been a whole lot of talk about changing the formula.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah. Well, you know, but, but I, but I, you know, I do think, you know, it, for, this is kind of a golden opportunity here with all this federal money. And, and I, and I think, you know, I, you know, I, I think that's the big thing, is trying to think of how best to seize this money. And, and utilize it, uh, you know, really kind of for the, the long term. Um, and whether that's, you know, getting kids up to speed, you know, in the, in the, uh, near term. Um, that's, that's obviously certainly something that's important. Um, but you know, there's, there's an opportunity here to, you know, potentially maybe to, to, you know, to, to do some good things for kids and and also, you know, really kind of, um, you know, hopefully, uh, you know, we can use it wisely and, 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 you know, and I hope, I, I'm, I'm, my hope is really not in five years that you know, people go crazy with the money, uh, uh, spend it frivolously and then, oh, no, we don't have any money and, uh, you know, so I think that's my, my big thing that's hopefully, um, hopefully, you know, we, we can, you know, uh, use it to the best of our abilities and, 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 uh, you know, make the most of it.
Well, I'm confident, Mike, in this region, you won't have that happening, so. Any other questions for Mike? From anybody? Uh, Tom and Charlie, can you guys hold on for a second after we leave, please? Okay, Mike, I, uh, appreciate your time as always and, uh, good luck in the living room or dining room or where you're this is located today. Maybe out, out at the pool someday.
Very good.
Thank you, Mike.
Have a great night.
Thank you, Mike.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, thanks Kathleen, thanks. Thank you, Dr. Blair.
Okay, take care.
Thanks, Tom.
Good night.
Hey Russ, Russ.
Yeah.
Hey, um, can you hold on for one second?
Sure.
Hey Russ and, and Tom, uh, the, the federal aid. I mean, I know you, you had a negative, right, Russ? I mean, I, your, your tax, your tax cap was a negative, right?
No, it was, uh, it was a tenth of a percent.
Right, but then you had, went up, you know, you got to sixty, you got seventy-five percent that, that supported your budget. Uh, do you think this federal money will, will help mitigate some of the fiscal